Mayor, this is tonight and it's brand new system. So we're gonna have to learn how to use it and get used to it and know where it was going. All right, here we go. Everybody ready? I'll call our monthly city council meeting on November the sixth, twenty twenty to order in order to conduct the business coming before the city council tonight. It's approximately seven P M. First order of business is our educational place of allegiance and I believe Mr. Black.
Brandon, Angela, Stacey.
Let's pray. Let's kind and graciously, Father, we again come to you asking for forgiveness for our many sins. Father, we also give you thanks for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. Father, we ask that you be with each and every one here tonight, each family member, each friend, each one is here. You know the situation, Father, if they troubled, they have to heal. Let the healing hand upon them, the comforting hand upon them, to be thy will. Father, we ask that you be with this nation. Heal it. We ask that you lead it in the right direction. We know it's in your command. Father, we have no control over it, but you do. Father, we ask that you be with all of our men and women in uniform throughout the world, throughout the nation, throughout the city, throughout the state, for without them we will not have the freedom to come tonight together to do the city's business. Father, we once again give you many thanks for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We're not worried of them. But we ask that you go with us, each and every one, tonight and bring us back safely to the next meeting. We ask these things on thy name. Amen. Join me with a plea, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor.
Mr. Black.
Mayor, excuse me, if I could one second. I need to test the audio to make sure the folks that are joining virtually can hear it, so it might be a quick noise again. Okay, I think it should be good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Welcome to our monthly meeting. Let the record be corrected of all council members present, along with our city administrator, Mr. Brandon Madden, our city servant, Cindy Miller. There is department heads spread out in the audience. We thank you all for being here tonight, especially our citizens and our business owners and those that we will hear from over this night at all. So we appreciate everybody being here tonight. First order of business, a proclamation. Have before me a request that came to me from the Johnson family, who through their church has been seeking to bring companionship and care for a lady's spirit and her well-being, especially during this trying time of COVID. She is a longtime resident of Millar Oaks, and it is my pleasure to have been able to issue a certificate to be delivered to her that reads, "Congratulations to Maggie Malden on your ninety-fifth birthday." The city of Malden wishes you many more happy years, and I know she'll be watching this video at some point, so I would ask council if you'd join me in a round of applause for Miss Maggie Malden on her ninety-fifth birthday. Thank you very much, and thank you to the Johnson family for watching after Miss Malden. Also tonight, at the request of the Small Business Saturday Coalition to our city, let me present the following proclamation as well as some thoughts. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the government of Malden, South Carolina celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community." According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty point seven million small businesses in the United States. They represent ninety-nine point seven percent of all firms with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for sixty-four point nine percent of net new jobs created from twenty, from two thousand to twenty eighteen. And whereas small businesses employ forty-seven point three percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, sixty-two percent of U.S. small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of twenty twenty in order to stay in business. Sixty-five percent of U.S. small business owners said it would be most helpful for their business to have their, quote, "regulars," end quote, "return and start making purchases again." And three-quarters of U.S. consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. Whereas ninety-six percent of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And ninety-seven percent of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas ninety-five percent of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop or eat at small, independently owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas the city of Malden supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Beyond that, I've had discussions with our Economic Development Director, Mr. Van Braun, with his staff, and with Ms. Pat Pomeroy of our Greater Malden Chamber of Commerce, and we felt we should do more to promote, not only just the one day, but more days. So beginning tonight and forward to forever, let this council, staff, myself, and all citizens promote in practice visiting, shopping, purchasing, and spending, and saying thank you to the small businesses within the Malden area. Tonight with us are some small business representatives from within our city. What I'll do is, if you don't mind, ask, as I introduce you, if you would make your way up to the front of the podium, facing the audience, and at the end, we'll get Mr. Braun to take our picture. Tonight with us is Michelle Powell and April Nichols with Moon Struts and Monograms. So they've been, that location for a long time. They officially opened it in July of twenty eighteen, taken over for the family that's been here for a long, long time. So certainly appreciate them. Also with us tonight is Ms. Deborah Nicholson, representing Thomas McAfee Funeral Homes. Haven't known that company for a long, long time. They finally came to the Malden area eight years ago?
Eight, almost nine.
Almost nine years, so welcome you tonight. Also with us, glad my wife is not here, Mr. Rick Robinson, Robinson Jewellers. Been in business at City of Malden over forty-five years. Rick now represents his mom Barbara, who's officially retired, so I think Rick and Susan are currently the faces you will see along with, I think your son's there, I'm still not. The friendly faces you'll see there and all the bling you want to be, so certainly appreciate them. Coming to our beautiful city, I gotta give a little history first on this lady. Most of us who've been here for a long, long time have known our State Farm agency, Mr. Joe Henson. We knew he was in the insurance business, but we also knew that he was like an uncle to us, as far as being able to talk to him and represent him, that he understood us. And in his passing, we all wondered what would happen. We were blessed from a lady who decided that she would come from Bolivia via Japan and other locations and join us. And not only did she take the State Farm agency and took it to number two in the country in two, three years, but she has adopted our city. She is a cousin, an aunt, a sister, a partner representing State Farm, Ms. Christina Horace. Thank you, Christina.
They're not gonna get rid of me.
As soon as she talk, you know she's not from around. A rejoinder. But also with us, now, if you haven't followed this one, you need to talk to Tracy and learn more about what she has done with musical innovations out east Butler, I think that's still called Tanner Road on that side?
Yeah, corner of Tanner and Butler.
Corner of Tanner and Butler. Eleven years in business, she's now one of the top one hundred dealers, I believe, in the nation in the eighth year in a row, actually out of a global list of almost ten thousand companies. Tracy Lee, thank you for joining the City of Malden. Evidently Robbie and Tommy and Ann and Jimmy from Kettles Corner wasn't able to make it tonight, but we certainly want to recognize them. They've been here greater than sixty years. I have to say it that way because I've known them since I was a wee little boy, and I know that's just a little bit more than sixty years. So certainly appreciate them. And these small businesses come before us, asking us, support them, get to know them, just a representative of a small fraction of our businesses, except for Deborah, come and visit her. I don't get to leave her. This is stand for her. I have a joke for that, and I didn't think you'd be. I'm doing that. And we're able to keep in touch with these because there is an organization that, they call it a Chamber of Commerce, but we know them much more as a family, and that's Kim and I think I know her. Behind the mask is Pat Pomeroy, so we certainly appreciate them. So if you would join me in giving a round of applause for these represented today, and council, if you'll stand up, we'll get a picture made. What do you mean wide angle lens?
You know, Mr. Madden, I would do it if you could.
He stepped back.
Step up, step up.
Mr. Madden.
Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us.
And as I'm returning to see that that's not enough, I want to also do this, if I may. I would like to invite the members of council to join Pat and myself and Economic Development Director, Mr. Madden, as we are going to start visiting at least three to four of our small businesses for the next week and a half leading up to this small business day after Thanksgiving, Saturday type thing. So you'd coordinate with Van or Mr. Madden kind of thing, and Pat, we'll get the names divvied up. We just want to go say hello to these small businesses, introduce ourselves, and let them know we really appreciate them opening business in Malden and value that relationship, and get to know you as a person as well. So beginning, thank you. Mayor, real quickly. Mr. Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get any further, while we're talking about the Chamber and Small Business Saturday, I want to make sure that we recognize, Kim had a birthday yesterday.
Thanks.
So happy birthday, Kim.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. I did post that all places, but I forgot to say that. Before us now is our audio presentation.
Auditor. Yes, yes. As council, members of council, mayor, as you know, council, we've completed fiscal year twenty twenty, June thirtieth of this year. We had a council workshop on Friday whereby our auditor provided an update on our audit and where we are, and he's here today to give a brief overview of the audit for the public. Yep, so maybe if you could come up now.
All right, I appreciate y'all letting me come and kind of go back over this again. I know we looked at it on Friday. As we did before, I know you get these big books, and there's a little bit of overkill, but we're just gonna hit the highlights again in the PowerPoint presentation. If you remember, I don't know if you have copies with you, but on the first page, we talked about the importance of internal controls, that there's checks and balances within the organization, and one of the things that we do as your auditors is that we try to look at your significant internal control processes and make sure that they're operating correctly. If they're not, then we support and let Brandon and Holly know about that, but it is also important, as you as council are aware of that, because you can't fix something if you don't know it's broken. So again, that's one of the things that we are looking for as we kind of review the records and the controls. And again, we want to remind everybody that these are your financial statements. Our responsibility is to issue an opinion, and so you have an opinion, which is kind of a strange term. It's called an unmodified opinion, but that's a good term because it means is that we're not aware of why we should modify our opinion. So again, you don't want an opinion that says everything looks good except for something. So you have an unmodified, which says we're not aware of anything being significant or materially misstated. We're gonna look now briefly at your fund balance. I think that's probably the biggest thing that you care about in the sense of looking at the measurements of how the city is doing. Your fund balance increased slightly, about three hundred thousand dollars. Remember, you have about three point seven million that is assigned fund balance. Those are monies that you set aside for annexation. I think that was about two point three five million. But another big piece is, remember in your fiscal year twenty-one budget, you also appropriated some of your fund balance, and that was one million for your fiscal year twenty-one budget. And so that's a lot of the piece that makes up that assigned category. The remaining category is called unassigned, which by definition, as you can see, means it's available. There's no constraints to it. That fund balance was about five point nine million, which is about fifty percent of your two thousand and twenty actual expenditures. The GFOA, which is kind of the Government Finance Officers Association, is the bible of governments. It recommends a minimum of two months, which would be about sixteen point seven percent. So you can see you do really well in relation to that benchmark. Remember, your own policy is that the city would like to maintain about twenty-five to thirty-five percent of your operating revenues in your general fund. And if you look at it from that perspective, you are at about thirty-seven percent. So you exceeded your internal kind of goal as well. So why do you want to have a good fund balance? Well, you know, honestly, the health pandemic is a great reason. A lot of entities now are wishing they had more fund balance because when a time comes like this, it's very difficult to weather the storm if you don't have money in the bank to carry you when revenues maybe are down. So that's a really big reason. Another reason, remember, some of your revenues come in at certain times. Remember your property taxes. Most of us just got those property tax bills in the last couple of weeks. A lot of you will pay them in December if you want the tax deduction this year. Otherwise, you're gonna pay them early next year. And you really don't collect a lot more real property taxes the rest of the year. Remember your business licenses, they come all in at one time as well. It helps you if you have emergencies or unanticipated expenses. It helps you if you issue debt, you're gonna get better interest rates. They're gonna see that if you have a strong fund balance, that you're more reliable, and we're gonna give you a better rate than maybe someone down the street. All right, well, let's turn over and look at your general fund revenues. Your total revenues were about sixteen million dollars, the biggest piece being property taxes, which was about seven point one million. The second biggest is four point six million in business licenses, two point six million in permits and franchise fees, and then some other sources as well. Your revenues increased about two hundred thousand over the prior year, so even with the health pandemic, you kind of really helped your end. You actually increased slightly over the prior year, and a lot of those are in, you know, property taxes. Business licenses still come in very strong. And what we have seen is if you have a lot of dining in restaurants, you were hurt a lot more than if you have a lot of fast food where you go through the dry through. Those held up. A lot of people wanted to eat, they couldn't go into a restaurant, but they could go through the dry through, and so those revenues really held up. As it relates to budget, you came in nine hundred thousand or six percent over budget, and a lot of that was in the business licensing. Now, part of that is, is that your finance staff are bringing them like to be conservative, so just because you got it last year doesn't mean they automatically budget last year's number plus ten percent. They take what you got last year, they actually discount a little bit to play it safe, and this really helps you when you have kind of an economy or a situation that we're experiencing this year. All right, well, let's turn to your general fund expenditures. You had eleven point six million, of which two point nine million was in your general government, four point three million in public safety, one point five million in sanitation, two point two million in culture and recreation and tourism, and the rest kind of in other expenditures. This was a slight, a very slight increase over the prior year by about a hundred thousand dollars. So you had higher wages, remember you gave a two percent average marriage increase or higher benefit costs, but at the same time, not all the positions are always full, there's always turnover, and then you also did some cost containment too with the health pandemic starting. As it relates to your budget, you came in under budget by a million dollars or eight percent. And again, some of the biggest areas are public safety and culture and recreation. So as we mentioned, you came in over revenue on your budget, you came in under on your expenditures, those are the two ways you want it to happen. When you do that, you're able to add a good bit to your fund balance or the ability to transfer monies to maybe a capital projects fund, to set aside monies for the future. So on the very bottom of that slide, we talk about some of the transfers. You had transfers out of four million dollars, of which you set aside one point seven million for capital projects this year. Remember also, you transferred about one point eight million to your fire service funds to cover all your firemen for the portion that you don't collect from the millage for the fire service area. So whenever you don't collect enough for the fire services, you transfer in the balance of those funds, and the rest was to cover debt service. All right, we're gonna briefly look at some other funds. Your hospitality accommodation tax fund, you have about one point two million in fund balance, and we just mentioned a lot of what was spent this year related to the sports center, the cultural center and playgrounds, some capital outlay there, and it's the operating costs of about four hundred thousand dollars. Your fire service fund, remember, it's intentional, but it has no fund balance. So what you do is you take all of your firemen and you charge it to the fire service fund. The fire service area millage covers a piece of it, and the rest you have to transfer into the general fund. So that is what took place this year, and you transferred in about one point seven million dollars to cover the portion that wasn't made up with property taxes. You also had a little bit of a lease purchase, I'm just gonna jump on down to the capital projects fund. There, in the capital projects fund, you had a fund balance of three point two million. Remember there, you had a lease that you issued this year that was for vehicles and equipment, but you also had a good bit of capital projects going on. Remember, you had stuff with the culture and sports center, remember the bathroom projects and the playground equipment, you always have paving projects going on, and then again, some more equipment and vehicles.
Mr. Phillips, if I can, can you make sure your mic is, that you hit the mic button? Just want to make sure folks can hear. No problem.
I'm using it pretty loud.
No, 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 no problem at all. Thank you.
On the sewer fund, I can talk quieter now. The sewer fund had approximately three point nine million in net position, of which about one point five billion is unrestricted, so that's available at year end. I'm going quicker. All right, next page, we're gonna look briefly at your property management fund. Remember, that's the warehouses and some of the spaces that you lease. You had operating revenues of fifty-four thousand this year, a little bit of expenses. And then, remember this year, you tore down some of the old buildings, you disposed of those, so we had to wipe those off this year. And so that was some of the significant events that took place in the property management fund. We're gonna briefly look at the pension accounting. Remember, because you participate in two state pension plans, you know, those plans are very, very underfunded on a state level. It's about twenty-two point eight billion dollars underfunded on the SCRS plan and about three billion dollars underfunded on the PRS plan. What they do is they allocate your proportionate piece of that liability to your financial statements. And how that is done is they take your contributions that you paid into the retirement system each year, and they divide it by the total of all contributions paid into the retirement system, and you get that percentage of the liability. So when we look at that, your liabilities for these two plans was about seventeen point eight million dollars. It increased about one point one million over the prior year, and the largest reason is if your payroll grows, guess what, you get a bigger piece. If your payroll stayed flat or went down, you'll get a smaller piece. The real kicker here is the second bullet point on the bottom, where we talk about your rate increases. You know, the people knows it is underfunded, and they're trying to fix that deficiency, and so they've begun to raise rates over the past few years at one percent per year. And if you notice there, they're gonna go up to about eighteen point five six to twenty-one point two four percent of every payroll dollar. Now, what's interesting about, that's not all that's being paid, that's what you as the employer are paying. The employee is also paying another nine percent. So think about how much of every dollar is going, gonna go into the state plan, and the hope is, is that these higher contribution amounts into the state plan will begin to lower that liability, and if it does, then of course your proportionate piece of the pension liability will go down as well. Time will tell. All right, next page, we're gonna briefly look at your capital assets. The balance there was thirty-three point eight million. It increased one point two million over the prior year. You had additions of three point two. We kind of list those, remember the Butler Road intersection project, some of the painting projects you had going on, the auditorium renovations, shelter and bathroom and playground improvements, building improvements, and then the purchase of vehicles and equipment. That kind of made up the three point two million in additions. You had some small disposable, the biggest thing was depreciation expense of two million going the other way. Some of the projects you were working on at June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, so again, we're looking back a few months, were really related to the sports center and cultural center, the street painting projects and the sewer projects, and some of those have been wrapped up, some of those probably are still ongoing. On the long-term obligation front, you had a total balance of seven point three million. It increased slightly by about one hundred thousand dollars. You made principal payments of seven hundred thousand dollars, but you also issued a new lease. Remember that we talked about for vehicles, a new side loader, a John Deere field break and other equipment as well. So that was what some of the capital outlay was for related to that lease. Your legal debt limit was about nine point seven million, of which you had outstanding general obligation bonds of about one point eight million, leaving you a legal debt limit. What that means is, is this is the amount of debt you as council could issue without going to a referendum, and that number is about seven point nine million dollars. Your total debt service payments for the year that we're in is about a million dollars. So that's your annual mortgage payment. So to think about your mortgage on your home, you might end up taking out a loan, but you've gotta make a certain amount of payments over time. Okay, next page, we just want to remind you about COVID-19. It does really affect a lot of your growth revenues, and if this continues for a long period of time or it gets worse, it could really, you know, take a toll and really lower some of your revenues. What if businesses start going out? What if there's foreclosures? What if rec never comes back because people don't want to go to the gym? That can begin to impact your revenues, and that's why that fund balance is so important to maintain. There's some new accounting standards coming. We just want to remind you about COVID-19. It does really affect a lot of your growth revenues. And if this continues for a long period of time or it gets worse, it could really, you know, take a toll and really lower some of your revenues. What if businesses start going out? What if there's foreclosures? What if rent never comes back because people don't want to go to the gym? That can begin to impact your revenues. And that's why that fund balance is so important to maintain. There's some new accounting standards coming for next year. One of them is that the city's firing one percent monies need to show up in the financials. That's a new pronouncement by the GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So that'll be a change that you will see next year. The following year, there's one on leases where they want to treat all leases on the full accrual statements like their debt. Not just that you show a rent payment when you make it. But we want you to show if you rent something for five years at a hundred thousand dollars, I want you to show me the liability for half a million. And I want you to show me that right to use the asset that you'll depreciate over the life of the lease. All right, on the compliance, on page nine. Good thing is, we did not come across any findings, significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We did not do a single audit this year. Remember, if you ever spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal money, we also have to do a single audit. There's also in your books or in your handouts at one time, a letter from us of required communication. But if we had disagreements with Brandon or with Holly, they were a hot, if it was a hostile working environment, if it was just other issues like that, we'd have to report those to you. And we did not have anything like that. The last slide again. Again, we remind everybody, you have an unmodified opinion. Strange term, that's a good term. And you have very good financial condition. Last thing I'd like to mention, you know, Holly and Brandon are great to work with sometimes. That's not so easy with some of our clients. But you know, it's really nice to have a group that really stays on top of things and that are very, I think, very good at providing you meaningful and good information. Okay, I know I've gone quick. Any questions that you might have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recognizing. I just wanted to point out, as we're talking about small businesses, Green Penny is also a local small business a quarter of a mile from here. So certainly partake in their services as well. One quick question, and not a big one. This may not be easily answered here. But you mentioned with the GASP rule change with having the liabilities going to, having our leases now going on to liability. Is that going to affect that ceiling at all next year substantially?
The only thing I know that you have a significant lease is actually you're a lesser on some of your properties. So there is lesser accounting where you don't have to set up a receivable. The flip side of if you're leasing for somebody else and you'd have to set up a payable. But outside of that, most of your issuance are true like debt issuances. And so they're already on your books. I really don't see a major impact to you right now on a negative side.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. I know I'd be remiss if I didn't ask the question. My predecessor always said up here as I listen to it kind of thing. Of all the municipalities that you are engaged with from a county standpoint, how does the I.C. rate, you know, percentage in the top one percent? Not that I'm leading you.
I really don't know. But I would, no doubt, in the top twenty-five. I think you would even be higher. But remember, you're transferring a lot of monies into your capital projects fund. If those monies had just stayed in your general fund, it would make that unassigned balance even higher. But you're starting to set aside those monies for future projects. So if I added those together, it would make your number even look much better.
Much better. Thank you. Any more doubts? Thank you, sir. All right. Check.
Thank you.
Next order of business is a reading approval of minutes for my city council meeting of October nineteenth, two thousand twenty. It's the pleasure of council.
Move for approval.
I have a motion for a move for approval, Mr. Matty.
Go ahead.
I have a second, Ms. King. Any discussion, correction of evidence? Hearing none, all of them favor, will the minutes be approved as submitted? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries seven to go. Ms. Miller, do we have any email questions, comments from citizens?
No, sir.
Mr. Matty, do we have anyone via Zoom requesting public comment?
Not at this time. We did have a comment that I think was a good comment from one of our attendees. Essentially saying they received the public information card from our public works department. And so we'll address that. But that was the only comment. That was a chat, not an actual comment.
Thank you, Mr. Matty. Then in public comment, agenda item, our first section of comment for our citizens, business owners, any item related to our agenda. Y'all have one signed up this evening, Mr. Doug Hunt. If you would step up to the mic and be sure it's on and state your name and address.
Doug Hunt, Air Force Attorney Court, Centralville, South Carolina. Old Malden residents and small business myself. We're developing a twenty acre site, the old Shaver home stayed out in the corner of Greenbrier and Lodge shelves road. The major portion of the property was annexed, I think, two years ago. Little triangle in the center that's point eight two of an acre that we're purchasing from Jan Rigsby, Jan Shaver Rigsby. Was not annexed, so we're just asking that be expedited and finished up by December seventh. So little triangle of the entire site that's already annexed.
I failed to state, you'll be limited to five minutes, but I need you to be brief and precise. Thank you. Next is a report from our city administrator, Mr. Matty.
Yes, Mayor, members of council. The audiovisual upgrades here in chambers substantially completed as of this week. There are some programming aspects of the chambers of the audio and video system that still need to be completed, but it's functioning now. We wanted to make sure you and the public had access to it this week. It's a great opportunity for our representative in the back from W.H. Platts, who's in the production room, to adjust the audio as it's going. So we know in future council meetings what those levels need to be set at. Again, we should, by the next council meeting, it should be fully functional. Right now, it's functioning and we're able to produce to the public and for council. Wanted to give an update there. The microphones, just as a reminder, if you press them, they're green, they're live. If you don't want to say anything or you don't want your mic picked up, make sure it's off. That's just a reminder. And so we're hoping that by the next council meeting, it'll be fully completed. But substantially completed now, and we're able to use most of the system. The second thing I wanted to recognize, Ms. Pat Pomeroy, for a chamber report, a list of upcoming events that their office is pushing forward through.
Mayor, council, thank you all for having the chamber. And more importantly, thank you so much for recognizing our small businesses. It's been a lot to them, and I'm happy everyone that they went to attend tonight. One of the things I want to discuss with you all is that, first of all, we are having a Christmas parade. I know most cities are not, but we are working on putting ours together. And it will be on December the fifth at two o'clock. And we're also going to do a tree lighting on December the third and at the cultural center at six o'clock. I sent over to you all today something I'm very proud of, and we have a new website. And we also have a site you can go to, just the local center. And we are excited about being able to promote laws and promote the chamber of businesses. And one of our chamber members has designed it, and she has not charged us. She has done it because she wants to have a nice website, Floretta Dany. And so we're very happy. I've been with the chamber forever, as you all know. And I've always wanted a nice website, so I think we're there today. And I'm very excited about that. I did ask for your input. If there's anything you need, that you feel like you need to change or add, we'd be happy to do that. Your input is very important. And also, we are having an event tomorrow night. It says the women of the chamber, but it's for anybody. It's so we can support our small business, which is Moonstruck, having a little shopping spree over there. And let me see if there's anything else. We did cancel breakfast with Santa because we think it's a little too much. We have a lot of people there, and we think it's a little too much with COVID. So other than that, we're just working right now, getting our membership together. And a lot of people can't pay their membership, so we're working with them, understanding what's going on with our council. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Ms. King.
Okay. I kind of know how to work this new equipment. Pat, thank you for being here tonight and for bringing our local businesses in. It's always good to see them. I don't have a question. I just wanted to remind, you mentioned the Christmas lighting that we'll have. And this year, it's going to be on Thursday versus Friday. So I know most of us are used to coming on a Friday night, so I just wanted to make that public that it would be like December third.
It is. And the reason we're changing it is because you really can't have the children there. I think Grebel County Schools does not allow them, even wanting to participate in anything as a school. Because we're not even having a band this year for our Malden Parade because the county does not allow them to be in the parade. So we're doing it on Thursday night, and Tim McClair is going to bring his Christmas program and do a little bit of that for the tree lighting. So I think it's going to be really nice. And he's not going to be here on Friday night, so we're accommodating him. Or maybe he's accommodating us.
Well, that's always one of my favorite events to kick off the holiday season. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew it was on a Thursday, so they wouldn't miss it. To mark their calendars.
And my friend Christina is going to have hot chocolate.
With a red tent, right?
In the red tent. And we are leaving because it's Kim's birthday, and we're her family. And we're going to thank her at dinner. So please forgive us. It's here, you know, we're all very close.
Oh, is Grebel big enough for this?
Thank you all again. Thank you for all you do for the chamber. It's growing slowly, but it's going to be back to where it should be. We're really excited about it. So thank you, thank you for all you did.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. I washed that.
Mayor, members of council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A report from standing committees. We normally only have that if any committee would like to speak up before that. There's a mauling report on the table. Be sure to pick up a copy of that. That contains a lot of the things that have been going on in our city in the last month. So be sure to get that on your way out. I'll help you keep up. And if any of you need notices sent out of what's going on in our city, be sure you're on Ms. Miller's email list, and she'll send the phone notices and everything out there. So be sure to get in touch with her also. Standing committees, anything for finance and policy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The largest item we had coming out of committee was the law report, which we just all heard. And that was all that we dealt with in our last committee meeting, as well as a workshop this past Friday. So that's all we have coming from finance and policy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would like to take a quick moment to recognize that we had three positions opened in the fire department for engineers. So we had about six or seven chiefs, seven, eight candidates that took the test and the train and required for those positions. And I'd like to recognize the three that were promoted to those engineer positions. The first being Katie Allen, Melvin McClellan, and Chris Spencer. And I would also like to point out that Katie Allen is our first female engineer that we've ever had at the City of Malden. So congratulations to all three of these individuals who worked hard to pass the test. I understand there was a lot of teamwork that went into this. So congratulations to all three of these firefighters that we have here at the city. Would you like to add anything to for today? I passed, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. King. Public works, Mr. Grayland, anything?
Nothing to report, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Economic planning, Doug, Mr. Matty.
Nothing to report, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Building codes, Ms. Kuzma.
I have nothing to report at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And recreations, Black.
Nothing to decide, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Black. Okay, next item, unfinished business. We have none. We go into new business there for an ordinance consideration. That's coming out of building services of the, Ms. Kuzma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have is annexation of Green Speed property at Greenbrier Drive. This is the first reading. This is approximately point eight seven acres. It's located at two thirty-seven Rose Bar Drive. This property is adjacent to twenty acres in the City of Malden. Currently, it's under contract and is planning to build a single-family residential neighborhood of about seventy-eight homes, and will range in the mid two hundred thousands. Water and electric are available at this tract. The applicant has purchased an easement for sewer and has worked out an arrangement with Rewatch to extend the sewer to this tract. The tract is currently located in the Malden Fire Service Area and will continue to be serviced by the Malden Fire Department. Upon annexation, the applicant is requesting this tract be rezoned from R S into county to R ten residential in the city. And at this time, I would like to make a motion that annex this tract and land it into the City of Malden and approve rezoning to R ten residential on first reading.
Yeah, I have a motion for Ms. Kuzma on the annexation. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Black. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of them in favor of the motion to annexation of this point eight two acres and the zoning of R ten, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries seven to go.
Mr. Mayor. Before we move on, I would like to request a special call meeting for second reading of this annexation due to the high urgency of the matter before December the seventh.
Okay, so we could consider that on the separate group. And thank you, Ms. Kuzma. Anything else on that one? Hearing none, we move to the next ordinance to establish standards. That's also from building services, Ms. Kuzma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is first reading of small cell wireless facilities ordinance. Just sort of as a background, at its October fifth meeting, the building post committee reviewed a paper draft ordinance that would permit the installation of small cell wireless facilities within the fellow driveway. That draft ordinance has been updated to incorporate comments from AT&amp;T and also has been reviewed by the city attorney. Just a little more than a week ahead of that committee meeting, the South Carolina General Assembly passed the Small Cell Wireless Facilities Deployment Act. At that time, the committee suggested for staff to reevaluate, I'm sorry, to evaluate the draft ordinance for compliance with the state act and make any unnecessary adjustment to ensure compliance. The Malden draft ordinance has since been revised for compliance with the state act and has been, again, reviewed by the city attorney, AT&amp;T, and Horizon Wireless. The new revised ordinance meets their approval. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the Small Cell Wireless Facilities Ordinance on first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzma. I have a motion for first reading. Is there a second?
There.
I have a second from Mr. Black. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries seven to go. Thank you, Ms. Kuzma. Standing committee items, Project Pickle. That's coming from the economic development, Mr. Matty.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had some developments, and I would ask that, or I would move that we hold this item on the floor until the next meeting.
Okay, I have a motion to hold this item on the floor until the next meeting, is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Mr. Reynolds, is there any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, holding this item until the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the item will be held. Okay, thank you, Mr. Matty.
Mayor, at this time, I would also move to suspend the rules to amend the agenda to move the executive session for contractual matter as the next item.
Okay, I have a motion to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second to suspend the rules, is there any discussion on suspending the rules to move the item of executive, along this to motion. Anyway, suspend the rules, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, suspend the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, we will suspend the rules and restate what.
It was simply to suspend the rules to move item E as the next item.
Okay, got it. Thank you, sir. So the next item to be considered would be item E, a motion to end the executive session for contractual matters. I have that, Mr. Graylin.
I move to enter an executive session to consider contractual matters related to construction and administration services as long by state statute, section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight two.
All right, I have a motion to end the executive session, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, Miss King, Mr. Reynolds, make your pick. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, we will retire to our executive session. Audience, once we come back out of that, we will return and pick up where we left off here, so please stand by. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Coming back, we can take a session at eight fifty-six P M, no decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you, Mr. Matty. So that returns us back to our standing committee items of F Y twenty twenty-one road paving from people, Mr. President.
Yes, so this year, the city contracted out a review of all our road systems using scanning, for lack of a technical, of all the roads in Malden that the city owns. Went through those roads, evaluated them based on the readings, nothing else, and then came back to us with a list of the priorities to, which roads need to be addressed first. Not just by looking at them, but actual measurements. And basically, the gist of this is to approve the new, this road paving list that came from IMS. And so I moved to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one road paving list that they provided us to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Graylin, I have a motion to approve the road paving list from IMS, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Here none, whoops, sorry, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up on this, there's money set aside for this project already, roughly two-point-seven million dollars, and we'll also have matching funds from Grebel County Legislative allocation. So this is just, this is not the exhaustive list of what roads will be paved, but we'll basically start at the top and work our way down to pave as much as we can for the already allocated amounts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good point.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. One other point, this goes out, I believe, five years, and it gives it not just, not just a plan today, this year, but a plan moving forward in the next five years. We know which roads are addressed, which ones need to be dealt with first. This is a, it's a good advance, a good process.
So the motion before us is only for F Y twenty twenty-one year one road paving list?
Correct.
Any other discussion?
Just make sure I'm clarifying, that's going to be the exhaustive list sent to CoTransCo, and we're going to pave until we run out of the allocated funds, correct?
That's correct, if council, the fiscal year part is really associated with the funding, the amount of funding that council appropriated, the perspective list in front, that you have in front of you, what will be provided to CoTransCo, the GLDTC, is the, all of the roads in the five years. The money that council has set aside, as Mr. Reynolds put, is the reason why there's a fiscal year twenty twenty-one, it's just to delineate the fiscal year.
Okay, so we are considering the motion of presenting this list to CoTransCo for year one through five, as presented by IMS in totality. Not that the money may do the whole thing, but that we exalt.
Yes.
This be your twenty twenty-one.
That's correct.
Is anyone else confused other than me? We're good, then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries seven zero. We are now down to item F, possible action on items discussed in executive session, is there any consideration by council?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Graylin.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to award the design and build construction to ACOM, as discussed in the meeting.
Okay, I have a motion to award the design, build, and construction contract to ACOM. Second?
Second.
I have a second from Miss King. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Okay, we are now down to, there are no committee of the whole items, we are to public comment. That would be back to our list, this is the public comment section for any item that would be a citizen or a public citizen, like, or sent to this council. Not to exceed five minutes, signal that please, the signed up, Mr. Rodney Neel. Rodney, after leave. Okay. Seeing no one else signed up, we will move on to council request. Matty.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually a, a message from Mr. Fleeman, you can get back to me on this. I was approached on Saturday afternoon by some residents in Noelwood who said that they saw a sanitation truck come through the neighborhood this past Friday and the Friday two weeks prior. And if residents, they were asking if residents can put items out for pickup outside of the assigned bay. They weren't quite sure why the trucks were going through, and I said, I'll have to ask, so.
The trucks were sweeping through for dead leaves and grass roots.
Okay, cool. Thank you, I will look in that.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Anyone else? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this isn't a request so much as a comment to Mr. Broad and the hard work that the Malden Little Theater did over the last few weeks for Moana. I had the chance to go watch the program and was absolutely blown away by the talent of seventeen-year-old and under kids. So, you know, for those guys to be able to get up and sing, dance, and do all that in front of a crowd, it's mind-blowing to me. I'll perfectly, I'm perfectly fine singing, dancing in the shower, but not so much on stage. And so, so their ability to do that and do it well was absolutely mind-blowing, and just an appreciation to all the students, please. Let them know how much council appreciates the drawl they're bringing in through this research. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else? Anyone else? Here anyone who wants to pledge their oath of honor. Some of them, motion for a dinner, Mr. Matty, and all those in favor, aye.
Aye.